Great. Okay, at 6:00 PM, I would like to call the Eastline Board of Ed regular meeting to order. The October 17th, Eastline Board of Ed regular meeting to order. Everyone can stand for the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On to the public comment. Do we have any public comment? What comments? Very none. That will close the public comment section. So before we move on to the approval minutes, Jill and Candice. Jill, you can hear us, but we cannot hear you yet. So if you have any comments, put them in the chat. And then when we vote, use the raise hand or thumbs up for voting. I won't say that. Okay. And so now we'll move on to the approval of minutes. And we have minutes from the October 3rd meeting to approve.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the minutes as amended. From the October, they were amended from the October 3rd meeting.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Are you making an amendment to the minutes?
No.
You're referring back to the change you made from the last meeting.
Oh, you're right. Yep.
Is that what?
Right.
Yeah. So just the regular minutes. Okay.
So as like the ones that are here.
The ones that are here.
Right.
Great.
I didn't hear the second.
Laura.
Thank you.
All those in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Right hand up. Opposed, staying. Okay. Minutes. Now we move on to our special reports. And we have Ms. Hardy here again. Nice to see you. Oh, okay. We have Brendan and Mahira here to give an update. Who's going first? Mahira, you're going first?
Yeah.
Okay.
So homecoming was last Saturday.
Can you speak up a little?
Yeah. So homecoming was last Saturday, and we got a lot of good feedback because last year it was outside and it was really cold. But this year, of course, we're inside, so a lot of people were happy to be inside and have a warm dance. And then related to that, the DJ was good, so we're going to rebook the same DJ for winter ball, which is scheduled for February 4th. And the class 24 seconds.
Awesome. So as I'm sure you all know, the whole network is down first.
Like, we may have heard something about that.
Yeah. Um, so that brought about all sorts of new challenges. But one of the big ones was the PSAT, which has now moved to the 25th. So I wanted to make a note here that both the faculty and student bodies are agreeing that this day should sort of end following the PSAT as opposed to following a like shortened the eight day schedule following the PSAT. And the general consensus was that following such a lengthy standardized test like that, attention spans are going to be shorter. A lot of people aren't going to be able to learn the material that they are actually provided on that day. And it will generally just be sort of a waste of time. And, yeah.
I'm sorry, you're saying that they should end?
End following the SAT, yes. Or?
Early dismissal or other activities?
What time does the test then? Yeah, what time does the test? Just to give us a.
I'm not sure the exact time. It may vary for each of the, for each of the grades. Yeah. Let us confer with Mrs. Kelly and I'll get you some information as to what our plans are there.
Okay.
There's been some different discussions going on since we moved the dates up.
Do you guys have suggested activities?
Um, I know before we've had like programming about, you know, like drug use. So in that sort of ballpark. Following those tests. However, I don't know if we will plan something on such short notice. But really anything besides classes, I think is better. So secondly, football team won their game last Friday night, 27 to 20 after tying in the fourth quarter. Moving to overtime and we won there. Moving forward, cross-country ECCs are this Thursday at the North Coast Golf Course. And in addition, Spirit Week was very successful this year. As you may or may not know, student bodies were pushed for having the pep rally moved inside as opposed to outside as it was last year. And that went super well. Everyone was very well behaved, very sportsmanlike, while also promoting spirit of competition. So that went super well. And that's all we have. We did, yeah.
Says with a smile. Yeah.
Other questions? Thanks so much.
All right, yes.
You guys are welcome to stay.
Yeah.
Alright, guys.
Thank you.
They know they'd like to leave and get started on their homework.
Yeah.
I'm sure.
Go back to the selectmen report.
I'm off to state the whole time. I'm sorry, I had to leave as doctor in the last meeting. But I was very interested in the presentation and the students on the ways of a common presentation. I'm sorry not to hear the end of that, but perhaps on the broadcast on TV, I'll be able to catch the end of that. Rest suggestions around self-conflicts. I'll start off with the Darryl Pond property. And the standard has been that the board of ed, uh, school board of selection will be reviewed several times. The past has been noted as how the best use of property. As you might recall, there's 100 acres. Those acres are environmentally preserved. A lot of quality. Both years of there will not get any plant trails or any of that nature. Open reserve with no structures allowed on it. The other 100 acres are a conversation with Parks and Rec. Parks and Recreation Department would like to be put in charge of that and have it turned down with some oversight from the Board of Selectmen. Lots of plants as to how that property might be best utilized. There are needs to that. The activities that might go on have to be relatively passive activities. And they will not implicate activities such as sports that are offered at the high school. Less formal things. Some random activities, special events. There's been quite a few people who have expressed interest in people law who are now going to neighboring communities that offer it. That could be done with. Trails that are already there, which are pretty rough. And so there's discussions ongoing. One's not a big current decision on that. But the Parks and Rec Commission has requested that they have been turned over to them and to other plans. A grant from the rescue fund, trying to hire a planner who would lay out the best uses of the property to make it accessible to all age groups. We also, and there are also several other restrictions on that, including, for those of you old timers, you might remember when we purchased the property. And part of the reason for that was that we would need to have additional water towers there. And that area of the property has still been, has been put on reserve and not be allowed to be developed. Particularly as we already have experienced this season of water restrictions. We've had some more severe ones previously. And we do have an agreement with London for water, but that is reaching capacity as well, especially as O line, parts of O line would like to look into. So I think that we'll really be very careful to make sure that that part of property is maintained for future use. So there's ongoing discussion on that. Charter revision commission will have its first meeting tomorrow night. Organizations, 11 people on the committee to get across the Republicans to be affiliated. And the Stevens is going to answer the question. We have a good mix of people involved in town development. They've got a lot of people with financial backgrounds and a couple of people who have served on the Board of Selectmen previously. It's probably one of our first meetings, so they have some. Long discussion. On the Board of Selectmen, I'd add there will be an opportunity to have input. And they will be required to hold separate public hearings during the process. They've been given an initial charge with, I believe, is 13 topics for discussion. Other proposals they come before then from the general topic. For discussion and, but that's the official charge they have to deal with. The official charges that were given to that. So as I said, they can turn them tomorrow night, and that will be their first meeting instructions and what they need to follow the guidelines. We have also going to be scheduled in November, a follow-up meeting with Score Group. And perhaps will be the dovetail with some of the things that we planned in working in score. We've hired an IT director and an human relations director. We're just starting soon. Human Resources Director will be Sandra Spencer. And the ID Director, Director will be Mr. Daniel Flurry. Exit 74 going along very well. All the demolition work is completed of the buildings and now they're basically moving around dirt. My pleasure. They find some, some other, I don't know if there's any historical finds, but during the demolition of the buildings, they did some interesting, unexpected finds. Particularly for the hotel property. So the exit 75 gas station work is ongoing. And the new owners of the car wash will be meeting with zoning in the next couple of weeks. On their plans for a new, more efficient car wash facility, which will take into consideration water restrictions, which will make it more efficient. Have some new attendant opening at 7:30. There's a big turnout for that. It becomes a soft opening, but when I went by, the lines were stretched in the sidewalk. And if somebody, if somebody on the board of ed can indicate if they saw anything.
I was there at 7:00 AM on Saturday morning, and there was a nice long ride at 7:00 AM on Saturday morning. But I walked there and I walked home with a nice bag of things.
I noticed you didn't bring anything to share tonight.
No, they're all gone. They didn't make it past Saturday.
And so I. If you have any answering questions or any information?
Yes. Is the charter revision meeting tomorrow night open to the public?
Yes. They will be getting their instructions and the county attorney will be there to.
Next starts at 7:00.
I believe it does.
Do we have any sense, Ms. Hardy, how, what the extent of this project is going to be? Charter revision could be such a.
It'll be over a year.
Over a year.
They have deadlines by state statute that they have to meet. And this will be part of tomorrow night's presentation to kind of start at what the deadline is and work backwards as to what they're going to accomplish.
Very good.
And for those people who's long here, they've been told that this will be quite extensive. And probably for some of the, depending on how they decide to divide up some committees, three to four meetings a month to get this done. And the, as I said, the guidelines of the state are very specific. And there are some charges that have been given to the commission, which I can be prepared about big changes in the town and how it's covered. So I think it's interesting we want to pay attention.
Attention, right.
And as I said, there will be numerous opportunities, which by state guidelines, they must have, which are open to the public. And I agree that their regular sessions will be open to the public as well.
Will they be available by Zoom as well, so you can watch the process and?
I'm not aware of that. I think that's something that the commission itself will. But they do have to take minutes and minutes of every subsidy meeting that they have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thanks so much. I'm sorry. Okay. So the next, so let's close the special reports. The next topic was discussion and action for finance facilities community on a presentation. C-Rat presentation. Unfortunately, they were not, they let us know they're not able to make it tonight. So we're going to postpone that meeting. We're trying to come up with a new, a presentation. We're going to come up with a new date for them to come and present. So that moves us to discussion action items for instructional. And the first item is the pathways program update.
Yes, we talked about it in a previous meeting, wanted to try and continue to give some updates on athletes' work. Dave Sulo's here. He met with myself, Kelly, at least it was last Friday, my, yeah, last Friday. So we had a good discussion and he's continuing on some good work. Dave, let me turn it over to you just to kind of share a couple of updates. You did receive them, the weekly update as well. So.
Thank you very much. I believe the information I'm going to share tonight was shared earlier.
Friday in the weekly update, yep.
There's a lot of information, so I'll try to skim through it. Pick, feel free to ask me if you want me to drill down on anything. So first, what is the pathways program? It's really not a single entity per se. I'll just read the goals and then I'll kind of go through what we've done so far. So the goals of the pathway program at Eastline High School are to advance student learning with community-based experiences, increase capacity in the career and technical education program, and support students in their post-secondary learning and career choices. With some of the new pathways programming, I guess even before I go over the list, I'm kind of envisioning that each career and technical education class at Eastline High School is going to have a community partner that they can work with. So ideally, each of these classes will work with someone in the community where the students could potentially do internships for credit or for not credit, just to help build some more capacity in our career and technical education program. So some things that we have started, Eastline Schools Before and After Care Program. We have a for-credit opportunity in conjunction with the Eastline High School preschool class. The Eastline Integrated Preschool Program. This is something in progress, but that's going to ideally partner up with the preschool lab class at Eastline High School. A new partnership is Burke Engineering in Eastline. It's a family-run, high-end engineering firm. Very cool. They've done some work with SpaceX. They have like a thank you letter. SpaceX folks. So they're looking to partner with our CAD programming or our computer tech programming. So really some very cool, high-end internship possibilities over Burke Engineering. Some other things in the coastal end, Guy's Oil in Eastline is starting to work with Coastal Connections. Mitchell College Athletics. This is a brand-new partnership and it's a pretty high-end partnership. So this is with the athletic department. A student is looking, looking into being an athletic trainer. This is really a high-end partnership I'm really, really proud of. Jeffrey Pan Studio and Mystic, another high-end partnership. The high-end artist in Mystic, we have a student who's looking to go to art school once she graduates. And this is a tremendous opportunity for her. Again, moving forward, ideally, we're going to try to connect all the CTE programs with community partnerships to help build some capacity. So a big part of my hours, Perkins Grant writing and funding and how that's being utilized. So it has been utilized in a couple of years, the Perkins Grant. But this year, after I finish this week, probably looking at $22,500 coming into Eastline Schools for our CTE programs. Some of it is offset with stipends for the HOSA, the Health Education, Students of America group and the DECA group, Distributed Education Clubs of America. So most of this money is going to be allocated to the CAD programming. So currently our CAD computers aren't up for the job. So we really need to upgrade our technology in the CAD program. So this will do a lot of good things for Eastline. So one is going to strengthen our dual enrollment college and career pathways program with Three Rivers Community College. Through the, this program, students earn college credit at no cost in their CAD II class. We're going to provide college solid work certifications. So the new computers will have that capacity to provide these certifications. Credentials and certifications are something that the state is really looking for us to increase in the high school level. So that's one of our methods to accomplish that. The CAD programming, the CAD II program, that's a direct hire route for electric boat. So my communications with the electric boat personnel, they will hire students out of Eastline High School directly through the CAD II program. So that's a really big win for students at Eastline High School. And also, you know, part of the Perkins is we're trying to increase access for special populations. So with the increase in our technology capabilities, we can bring more programming to special populations through assistive technology. That's kind of being built into the curriculum by this year. And so this is pretty big. So due to the cooperative efforts, we've been working with Three Rivers Community College to strengthen our CAD program. That's our partner. They pledged, we'll see at the end, but they've pledged an additional $30,000 of grant funding. So to completely get the CAD program where we want it, it's approximately $50,000. So 30 plus the 20. Just as long as we're talking about grant funding, also Mystic Seaport, building that connection with Coastal Connections again. And they have committed to grant funding all of the activities that Coastal does with Mystic Seaport. So there's team building activities. There's six apprentice days that are taught by their instructors. So that is now 100% grant funded through Mystic Seaport. That's a great partnership. Some big news, we're looking at an emergency medical technician class to be offered at Eastline High School next year. So we're looking at some Perkins grants, some Eastern Workforce Initiative Board grant money to help seed that program. We have a great person doing that, Mary Toronto. That's our anticipated plan. Students will have the opportunity to complete a state-approved EMT certification course at Eastline High School. Patient contact hours will be in collaboration with local hospitals, firehouses, such as the Flanders Firehouse. Students will sit for the National Registry Registry of Emergency Medical Technicians. There's a written and practical exam piece that they'll be prepared to sit for. The course will more than likely be offered as a college and career pathway in cooperation with Three Rivers Community College. I'm just looking at UConn versus Three Rivers. What's going to be the best partnership? Probably trending towards Three Rivers since they've been so generous with us. This is another direct hire opportunity. Students can get jobs right out of the box with this EMT certification. And other places require this. So firefighters have to be EMTs to get that particular position. And just in the medical field, I have an EMT cert, just it. The acronym, acronyms, the way you approach patient care is something that's ingrained that they can do for their lifetime. Their physicians assistants, doctors, or have you. So this is a, this is a tremendous opportunity. We're just lucky to have such a talented teacher to be able to do this. And as I mentioned, I'm looking at the Eastern Connecticut Workforce Investment Board to help fund some of the startup costing. Startup may be about eight to $12,000. So looking at that. Some off-site programs. So we're thinking out of the box a little here. So. So we'd like to increase some more capacity in our career and technical education programs. One is the manufacturing piece. I've done a lot of work with the Youth Manufacturing Pipeline Initiative that works with EB and the workforce boards. And we just don't have the capacity to kind of build up that manufacturing piece at this time. I'll talk about some other pieces we are building, but the manufacturing piece is difficult. And essentially, it's really to do with space in the building. We just don't have that particular space. So we're looking at off-site opportunities. So to start off this conversation, we're looking to have a basic automotive course at Furman's Garage. The Furman family has donated their garage at no cost. There is one of the mechanics there. He has a bachelor's degree and an associate's degree. He's a great guy, high-end guy who knows his stuff. So we're looking to have him teach the course on four Saturdays. There'll be a small student fee. We haven't quite figured that out yet. We'll figure out a fee and ideally some foundation funding to help supplement that. We're looking at Waterford High School to help with our intended curriculum. So between Andrew, the person at Furman's, and the Waterford School System, we're going to work with that curriculum to tweak it as best we can. But I think it's a good opportunity for Eastline students. We're also looking at a marine trades, small boat and marine engineering course at Port Nianic. Another great opportunity. Port Nianic is offering their facility at no cost. Again, looking at Saturday sessions, probably four sessions. It'll be taught by one of the owners, Scott Bowden. He has a bachelor's degree and previously taught a 22-week course for the Sound School in New Haven. He's another very high-end individual. This is another great opportunity for some of the marine trades or for just, you know, locals around here with boats, learning how to put down your boat, put down your engine, do some basic electronics in your boat. So it's, it's a phenomenal course. Talking about increasing our capacity in the career and technical education piece. So we have, we purchased the curriculum for, so we're working with the North Atlantic State's Carpenter's Training Fund. And they have a curriculum for essentially carpenters. And we purchased it and we started to use the curriculum. So the, the big upshot of this is the support we're getting from the union folks. And they have a deal with us. We're going to take a little deeper dive at the curriculum, make sure we can satisfy all these curriculum pieces. But essentially, if you're going to be an apprentice, it's a four-year apprenticeship. And with the North Atlantic State's Carpenter's Training Fund curriculum, the union is willing to offset one year of that apprenticeship. So essentially, if a student wanted to be a carpenter, join the union, he'd have a three-year apprenticeship before it becomes a journeyman versus a four-year apprenticeship. And it's really a good deal. This union is very supportive. We also, they'll also throw in probably once a month, they have a state-of-the-art facility in Wallingford. We've taken a visit before, very high-end building. They build stairs, walls, all these training pieces for the carpenters. And we'd have access to that once a month at no cost with their instructors providing students a hands-on, high-end experience in carpentry. So it's, it's a very good opportunity. So that's really a pilot program at this point. We're looking to solidify some of the curriculum pieces, but I think that'll be a strong piece as of next year. So we're continuing to work with the Youth Manufacturing Pipeline Initiative. We're going to be meeting with them one-on-one shortly, Mr. Wilson and Mr. Clark, to take a look at the CAD program and the furniture woodworking program. Well, again, I'll again proctor the Eastern Connecticut Youth Manufacturing Pipeline Initiative assessment. So that. So that provides no cost training for students upon graduation in electric boat. So essentially, we proctor an assessment through the Eastern Connecticut Workforce, Workforce Investment Board and the Youth Manufacturing Pipeline Initiative. Students take the assessment. If they pass that assessment, they have the opportunity for six to eight weeks of training over the summer for free. And it really sets them up typically for electric boat or other local manufacturers. It's a great opportunity in Eastern Connecticut at this point. We're also, in terms of that assessment, started to collaborate with our transition teacher at Eastline High School. So we're looking for the teacher to help prepare students for the assessment. So look at the assessment, some of the curriculum pieces and how we can better support students. There's a lot of tricky measurement on that particular assessment just to help prep for the test. It's in here somewhere. I'm skipping around, but you know, in terms of the carpentry piece, we did have a student last year go through our carpentry program. And then he did the summer training at, for electric boat. And he was hired directly into electric boat. I went to this big signing ceremony. They had a grasso tech. And it was impressive. They really honored these students. They had all these state representatives. They had high end folks from electric boat. So I do feel like in terms of capacity, maybe we're not going to hit the mark on a manufacturing piece. Just don't have the space. But I kind of feel like we're going to hit it out of the park with the carpentry piece. I think we're really playing to our strengths here. And there's definitely a need for direct hires for fantastic jobs and a great union connection if they want to go that way. Manufacturing Career Fairs. I'll be working on disseminating some information. There's a couple of big ones coming up, especially Manufacturing Health and Wellness Career Expo at the Holiday Inn at Norwich. I'll help out with that. In a final kind of shout out to our career concentrations program. That is doubled, if not tripled in capacity this last couple of years. We have a lot of students interested in that program. We just kind of finished going through all the applicants. We must have had sixty, seventy students apply. So it's a great program. It kind of connects with Perkins Grant funding too. They want to see this career concentrations program in place. And a lot of students are really taking advantage of this particular program. And a little shout out to some of the teachers out there that really helped out with this program. Lori Singer, Jessica Garcia, Narsa Screen, Liz Mays, Kim Hurlock, and Rachel McShod. It's really taken a team. We've had so many people, so many students interested in this program this year. And I'm just very happy it's going so well. Run down, there's anything you want me to further explain, I certainly can.
I, I just, wow, you got a million things going on here and there's all these opportunities for the kids. How? How are you making sure that the kids who might benefit from these are, or actually any kid? Are, how are we getting the information to the kids and the parents about these programs? What exists now to make sure that we don't miss the start of that Saturday course that's starting next week or whatever?
I'm not sure if you do. The internet was down last week. No, so in terms of, like I said, like the Burke Engineering and such, I really want to lock that down before I kind of go public with that. They have prior to, they have photos they want to share with the public and others they don't. So I'm waiting for those photos. As far as the Saturday piece, we're just, I want to make sure every piece is in place. So I want to lock down the insurance, make sure that's all locked down. That's going to take me two to three weeks at least. Make sure we're just in a, I don't want to backpedal on anything. I want to make sure that everything is in place for that. For the EMT piece, we have a survey going out to all the students to gauge interest. I'm sure there's going to be interest, but we want to gauge the interest first. Same thing with these two courses. I think to put in our due diligence, we need to have surveyed the stupid bodies best as possible and put that out to the public as well. So I'd love to put this out soon, but I want to make sure that Furman's is a hundred percent comfortable, which they are. And I want to make sure our parts and pieces are correct. Same with Port Niantic. These are, these are high end places. These are some of the best.
You know, it sounds like a lot of great opportunities. I just, you know, trying to, I know, trying to get information to kids and parents before the train leaves the station sometimes.
Yeah, we'll use a combination, you know, the directive to campus, social media pieces, probably a little morning news piece, but we'll be getting that out as, as fast and as best as possible. But again, I want to make sure this is super tight before we have an unexpected surprise. There's seen other stuff we're looking at to state is loosen kind of regulations. I have to take a deeper dive into this. But as far as instructors for the CTE areas, so they really want, because it's, it's hard to get people who are as skilled as we'd like in some of the certain CTE areas. This, as I understand it, they're accepting kind of instructors for these positions. I'd like to kind of take a look at that as well. So there'll be a, more than likely myself at these Saturdays just to help oversee it. But we, you know, take a look at that piece as well.
So to echo Bill, this is way, way cool. I just have a couple of questions though. The non-school part of this, are we doing our background checks?
That's part of our due diligence. I want to make sure the facilities are safe to ocean standards, for the parts and pieces.
And then my second question is why do we have Furman's and the Port Niantic as a non-credit class?
We can't provide that many hours. So we can provide this great opportunity. Maybe at some point in time, we can work out something with transportation down the road, but this is a good, I think, first step. It'd be phenomenal to have like a credit bearing opportunity, but we have to warm into this. I mean, exceptionally generous thus far.
What would the activities be covering on that?
Well, partly be quite honest to make sure people have some skin in the game. You know, twenty five dollars or something like that, because it's a Saturday class. Also pay the instructor. So the instructor could be compensated for his time as well. So those two things.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the presentation. Very exciting. But I'm wondering as far as how many students do you have already in the Pathways Program? Do you have, or is it, are you just at the initial?
I think for the high school piece with the initial stages.
Okay.
And there's, you have to, we have to take a better look at what's can be credit bearing, non-credit bearing, some other parts and pieces. So that's still more.
So you don't know yet?
Not a lot.
So currently zero or?
Depends on which area too of that, like the career. There's seventy kids.
Eighty or eighty kids. Pathways, right now, people who've signed all the paperwork or earned credit really just want at this point. So we're trying to build more and more capacity as well.
Okay. And are you the person that's going out establishing all of these relationships and contracts and?
Most part of this. So at Coastal, it's a, it's a mix. We have our LTI, our Learning Through Interest teacher, Dan Crowley. So he's out there as well, but most, most of the time, building these initial relationships.
Well, kudos to you. And it looks like you're doing both for profit and nonprofit organization.
Yes.
Correct. And, okay. And does that align with our mission statements and what we're trying to accomplish as a school district? Is that?
I feel in my mind, it kind of aligns with the particular CTE class, Career Technical Education class. If we're looking at our IT and CAD kids, I feel like if there's a for-profit opportunity at a high end place like Burke, I think it's a great match. Maybe some of our other students, you know, maybe the preschool program or different programs, looking more nonprofit, that's fine too. Or if there's other nonprofit IT opportunities, that's fine too. We're kind of ideally looking at the highest that, most paying for a buck for these. But one thing is, we really want to establish long-term relationships. So Coastal, we had lots of people interning all over, but I think we're trying to drill down for high-end, long-term, solid relationships. I think that's our best.
Great. Thank you so much. Very interesting.
Thanks.
Thanks. Yeah, appreciate it.
Okay. Next item is the, for discussion is the district assessment overview.
So you all should have received all the slides and listed a fantastic job putting these together. And through last week, she's going to run through and give a picture of a combination of components, both S back, high school S T, cultural and climate items as well. So I'm going to turn it over to you, Manley.
Sure. Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it. I too shared this presentation with my notes in the weekly update so that if you wanted to take some time to dive into some of those notes in, ahead of time, I, some of these slides I'll, I will be going over quite quickly, but feel free to ask the question at the end for clarification if needed. Yeah, so tonight I'm going to talk, I'm using my educational jargon here. In the classroom, sometimes we look at what, what are our glows, things that we're doing really well, areas of successes for us in Eastline. We'll also take a closer look at where our areas in need of improvements, our areas of growth. And then along the way, I'm going to also just be discussing how this information has, has helped us in supporting our focus pillars for this year. And how that ties into the, the district's improvement plans. So the data points that we'll be referencing that Jeff had mentioned are our balance assessment that we do in grades three through eight in math and ELA. Our science assessment, which is the next generation science assessment. That's in grades five, eight, and eleven. We'll also be taking a look at our SAT scores, grade eleven, math and ELA. And you know, we, in Eastline, I, I know that it's a value that we don't just necessarily look at academic data, right? So it's really important to look at some of the other data that we have that helps to drive some of our decision making. So we'll look at some of the survey data, both from the CVAC survey and our school climate data from the spring of last year. So I'm going to spoil it and start with the findings of the data analysis for you ahead of time. And then I hope to take you through some illustrations over the course of the slide deck to kind of highlight some of these areas. So you know, we have experienced learning loss in Eastline, just as many other districts have across the state as a result of the pandemic. Our student centered coaching model has supported key growth, growth in key areas. And I'll talk about that in a little bit. Overall, Eastline leads its demographic reference group in many of the assessment categories at all levels. Patterns of our assessment data in fifth grade continue to foster the need to investigate further. A focus on mental health, relationship building, and school connectedness will be important in supporting students' return to a post-pandemic environment. We do have academic achievement gaps that need to be addressed across all grade levels. And Eastline continues to demonstrate a significant strength in our science area across all grade levels. So this illustration is really big picture in math, ELA, and science. You know what? I'm going to back up for just a second around our data points because I want to make sure that you guys are clear that we skipped over the twenty twenty one data point many times. You'll notice that, that that data is not necessarily included in all the slides. I did provide you one slide that gives you kind of a last year to this year analysis. But the state has removed that data set from a lot of its data offerings. So it's not necessarily always accessible. I kind of went back and pulled some of it just so we had something that we can look at from last year to this year. So if you look at the, the big picture overview, the district performance index is the average of all assessment scores in math, ELA, and science. That's of our NGSS, our SAT, and our SBA. So what you'll see in this graph is that we have experienced learning loss in all three areas. From twenty seventeen, eighteen to this academics year and in some content areas more than others. This is a new set of data that the state has put out on their ed site, website. And you can see the arrow pointing to the Eastline bubble there, but let me just take a, a time to explain what you're looking at here. This is a comparison of our performance index and our learning loss. So if you look at where it says target, that vertical axis there, anything to the right of that line means that we are, we've met the target, the state's average target. So you can see Eastline is to the right of that. And then you'll see the, the horizontal axis where it says at zero or no difference. That indicates learning loss. So anything above the line was actually a gain for a district. Anything below the line was a loss. And so you can see that, and the way I like, these are all the districts across the state to state. So Eastline is clustered in a bubble of all of the districts across the states. You can kind of see where Eastline compares to the rest of the districts. So we continue to meet our target, but you can see that we have experienced about four points of learning loss average. And the table to the right is sort of comparatively speaking, where are we in our dirt as it relates to learning loss? And you, you know, you can see that we are in that bottom third. I would argue that we had more to lost, more to lose in relation to the dirt. And I will, I'm excited to get to the point where I'm, I'll show you some of the growth and where we're headed in terms of recovery.
Are you talking in terms of standard scores for the?
The performance index is the average score on the assessment. So this is, we're just looking at the average score of all the assessments across the state. So this is really like really big picture data. This just demonstrates the learning loss more specifically in different grade levels in terms of, we call them rough cohort analysis. So it's a group of students that we follow over the course of three years. It's not the exact same group of students, but you know, students that were in third grade in twenty seventeen, eighteen are now in that cohort of current sixth graders. So we kind of follow that cohort over the course of three years. We've got ELA left hand side and now.
At least I know you guys said questions at the end. Could you just, can I just ask a question to clarify? So can you just go through the, the current sixth graders?
So this was their assessment last year and while they were in fifth grade.
And comparing to what they did in fourth grade?
And third grade.
Third grade.
Correct.
Okay. So roughly the same group.
Not exactly, but rough.
Yeah, because people come and go.
Right. So we're kind of like following them as a cohort over the course of three years. I'm going to dive into the fifth grade academic year. That's where we, we, that's an area of grow for us. And I'll get to that in a little bit.
Okay, thank you.
I will also demonstrate, I mean, our data demonstrates that we, we, despite our learning loss, we still, you know, pretty strongly outperform the state average in both ELA and math in every grade level. So that's just what this is the. As I had mentioned in my find, my findings, this, this graph demonstrates some areas that we really need to hone in on as it relates to achievement gaps and different subcategories. So you can see that top category, students with disabilities. You know, they're really underperforming as it relates to all students that, that bar at the bottom. And we also are taking a really close look at our high needs populations and our English language learners. We're, one of the reasons why we're moving to one of our focus pillars, which is high impact teaching, is looking at those research-based instructional strategies that we know work for all students. Especially those students who are students with disabilities or ELL students or students who typically have a difficult time learning. And so that's one of the reasons why we're moving in this direction is we know it works for all students, but in particular, students that fall within those categories who are lagging behind. So this is the one set, this one, the one graph that I will put in front of the group that compares last year's data to this year's data. So this is the percentage of students meeting or exceeding goal in the math and ELA assessments from third to fourth grade. So just want to show you that although despite us learning, having some learning loss over the course of the progression of the past three years, both, both pre-pandemic to post-pandemic, we are demonstrating growth in, in certain areas such as the third to fourth grade cohort. As I had mentioned earlier, in comparison to our dirt, we are in the top third for E L A from last year's average scores. Top third for math as well, so fourth out of twenty four. Leading the charge in science, first out of twenty four districts in our science assessment scores. Which was an area of glow for us. And for third grade, we're in the, you know, above the middle of the road in terms of our E L A performance index for for math and E L A. One of the reasons why these assessments or these analyses are so great, in addition to just looking at our own data, is we start to look at other districts, right? So I'm clearly looking at Rocky Hill, Old Saybrook as districts that we might want to look towards in terms of what are they doing? Not that we want to chase numbers, but it's their districts that we can learn from. And I will also note that even though Salem is not in our dirt, I did include them in this analysis because these are the students that are coming to us eventually. So you'll see that Salem is also doing really well and clearly a district we want to be collaborating with and possibly learn from. So now I'm going to kind of get away from the, the conversation around average scores and talk about growth. Cuz growth is really important, especially post pandemic when where our students have a lot of room to grow. So the percentage of students meeting their growth target, so every student actually gets a growth target on the assessment. And so we measured this, this measurement is the percentage of those students who meet that growth target. So we were third out of our district in terms of growth for E L A. And we were first out of twenty four in growth for math. And I really have to take the opportunity to talk specifically about the student centered coaching model as being an area that I think attributed to the success. We really honed in on that those third and fourth grade cohorts looked at the data and the coaches really helped to help teachers identify areas in need of growth and and tailor their instruction to meet the needs of the students. And we're seeing the results of that here. But you might be saying, well, Emily, maybe we grow all the time in math. Maybe that's sort of, you know, something that we do all the time here in Eastline. And we definitely do. So if you look at the next slide, we've had an average of around fifty to sixty percent growth on any given assessment over the course of the past five years. Last year, we saw seventy six point six percent students meeting their growth target. So I could, would consider that, you know, something to celebrate for us here in Eastline. So let's shift the conversation a little bit to fifth grade where this is definitely an area of growth for us. And when we're looking at trends and data, it's important to look at what are we celebrating, but also what is the data telling us that we might need to really diagnose more closely what's happening? So when I look at the fifth grade E L A dirt comparison for our fifth grade students meeting their growth, now we're finding ourselves in the bottom third of that. And then, you know, the question is around, well, what has that looked like historically for us? And historically, it, it has been between about thirty and forty percent, so not as good as you know, what we've seen in our fourth grade cohort. And so I feel as though we have work to do in this area. And but I will also note that, you know, we, we were above our growth target from the year sixteen seventeen seventeen eighteen and eighteen nineteen. And in math is a real, real concern. We were, you know, coming in twenty fourth out of twenty four in the way of growth and math assessment data. And so this is a space that we are already looking at. It was an observation we made last year. I will say that we have some things going on right now with our math coach and curriculum and fellow who's really taking a hard look at the fifth grade math curriculum. And diving into not only just the S B A data, but the data, our screening data that we use, our I ready data in the middle school. I know that Mr. Vic Hood has a committee looking at the structure of fifth grade in general, right? This is, we transition students from fourth to fifth grade here in Eastline. And so that transition, the transition from middle to high school can be difficult in general, and we do it at an earlier age than most middle schools do across the state. So we're looking at what could we be looking at in terms of how that transition happens? So for example, in fourth grade, students have about eighty minutes of instructional time of math a day. And in fifth grade, they have forty. So even just the structure, we've reduced now the instructional time for our subject areas in half. On the flip side of that, our students have really unique opportunities through life arts. So it's this balance between find, you know, identifying what needs to happen to support and continue the academic growth and development of our students. But also providing them that middle school experience through the life arts program. So I will continue to keep the board updated on our work around that. One other thing I do want to note in specific to math and growth at the middle school is that I, I truly believe this is a structural and curriculum issue. This is not a teacher issue. I also think that as a result of, we moved to the, the math coaching model last year. But we also, our math coach was out on maternity leave at the beginning of the school year, so we missed a significant time with her and her leadership to start the school year. And we did, we are now supplementing some of our tiered intervention through our title two grant with a math interventionist. And that person did not start until midway through the year last year. So we made some adjustments, but the timing was just a little off for us last year. So I'm really hoping now, starting the school year with the math coach in place, our interventionist in place, we're really getting out ahead of the gate. The other really interesting and important thing to note is over the course of the next three years for students in the middle school, they really start to catch up to the average of the growth targets and sixth, seventh, and eighth grade in our dirt. So despite that regression in fifth grade, our students are really resilient. And by the time that they reach eighth grade, we're, we're, we're pretty much at the same space that our dirt averages. I just can't help to think that if we didn't have that regression, what that trajectory would be for our students. And I'm gonna get to that in a little bit, just to, just to talk about that a little bit further for you. Okay, so just shifting to our, our S A T five year trend data. We had one of the best years in the past five years for S A T at the high school, both math and E L A. You can see that in the, in the table there. And we were well out in front of our dirt, both for math and E L A. We led, we were first for English and first for math. So again, another opportunity to, to just celebrate success for us here in Eastline. But what I did was, I went in and I looked at some of those top ten schools from, I know, niche dot com. But you know, just looking at those, those, those high performing districts and Eastline is right there with them. And I, I just can't help, I had to go back to that fifth grade regression. And I feel as though we would be in a more competitive space here if we can really, really keep that slide from happening in fifth grade. And I know that we can't, we just have to dedicate the time, space and resources to it to make it happen. And I am making that my baby this year. So I've talked to Jeff about it. It's a part of my goal. I've been working with the middle school team. Kristen Amorall's been great with the new math coach at the middle school. And we're gonna really work hard to further diagnosis problem and make some changes as a result. As we had mentioned also, that the holistic approach is really important here for us. So I just wanted to kind of go over some of the the survey data that we had, cuz I think it's really telling and leads to and speaks to the importance of some of the work that we're doing in our other pillars of culture and climate and S E L. So this was a question that was asked on the C R A C survey. This was grade seven through twelve. In the past twelve months, I've had anxiety that has impacted my learning during the day. And we have forty two percent of our students respond in favor of that, that question. So you know, we have students who are struggling essentially. And then in the past twelve months, I've had feelings of helplessness which have impacted my learning during the school day. And we had twenty seven percent of our students answer in favor of that question. Then we took a look at the results and the, the relationship. So what, as we know, school connectedness and that, that connection to a trusted adult is a really important factor in student success. So we asked this question on our survey data. There's at least one trusted adult in this school that I feel knows me well, that I can connect with. We had sixty four percent who agreed or strongly agreed. We had twenty percent that were not sure. And I feel as though that's a twenty percent we can really, really very quickly move over to strongly agree or agree. It's just a matter of creating the, the the structure for that to happen and providing the training and support for our teachers to let them know it's okay to take time to develop relationships with your students. And I think that's what we're, the spirit behind the work and restorative practice. And then the E L P S, the survey, the question around, I have a strong sense of belonging in this school and true feeling respected, valued, and safe. Same type of question. I think the work that we're doing through the D E I focus pillar can help with this. And again, that twenty four percent that are answering not sure, you know, we just need to, to hone in on what is it that we're doing? How are, I think a lot of this is around communication. So in the school improvement plans, our, our buildings are really taking a look at this and building in some action steps to ensure that there's a space in place for students to voice how they're feeling. And we're responding to that. Real positive component of this year, our survey was the response to this statement. Teachers and staff at my school encourage me and support me to do my best. And we had ninety one percent of our students who responded in favor of that. So you know, we know that there's that strength in there. It's just a matter of what are we doing through action steps and action planning that can help bring, you know, help to kind of increase the, the sense of belonging and that connection with the trusted adult in the building. And I think even some of the work we're, we're talking about in our triple A meeting around culture and climate will help to support set, set the expectations for our buildings and our community around that. So this information is, I talked about how some of this really helps to drive our decisions around the four pillars of our focus pillars for this year. Social and emotional learning was one that was you know, something that we focused on in the previous past two or three years. We continue to do that because we're, the survey results demonstrate the need. And we know it's an essential component of the learning process for our students. High impact teaching, as I had said before, in terms of closing that achievement gap, we think about that fifth grade cohort. Really honing in and taking the guesswork out of what instructional strategies actually work. And using the strategies that we know have been proven through research is a focus area for us. And that is the focus work that I'm doing with the coaches this year. So as they're coaching into classrooms, they're, they are modeling and teaching those strategies that we know have a high impact on student achievement through research. The work around diversity, equity, inclusion, inclusive of, you know, some of those survey data that I had just demonstrated to you. Also, the achievement gap work, you know, all of those areas are really essential. And it's, that piece also was around continuing those courageous conversations in the classroom and ensuring students and adults are feeling safe and supported to, you know, continue to talk about some difficult topics. And then culture and climate, the work around restorative practice and really honing in on building strong and powerful relationships in the building to support student group.
Questions?
Lot of information.
Yeah, just, thank you for the presentation. I just had a question around the third cohort that you described as your baby. Just, you talked about looking at, kind of taking a diagnostic approach.
Yes.
Can you drill into that a little bit? I'm just kind of thinking like, you know, when you're analyzing all of that, it's, you, you can kind of come up with multiple different things.
Right.
How are you gonna, gonna get to like, you know, kind of cause or where you're gonna kind of tackle and all of that?
So the S B A data in and of itself does not drill down deep enough into skills and concepts that really provide us with the information necessary to identify like where, where are the students really, really lagging in those, that skill set? So that's where we're gonna dive into our star in I ready data. Those, that's the, those are our affirmative assessments, our, you know, our screeners that we use over the course of the school year. And you know, I'll work with Kristen Amorall to look at, okay, so what are the standards that just aren't being met? You know, what are the trends of that data? And then we're gonna cross that, walk that with the curriculum in which we're teaching. You know, we, we are in in need of some curriculum review. I think in, just in my initial analysis, it's not necessarily consistent and aligned. And so that's, I, I, I just know off the bat that that's an area in which we're going to be able to dive deeper in. And so that's the, the data, the standards and the curricular component. The instructional piece is one too. So Kristen will be pushing in and supporting the teachers and making sure that, you know, the, the standards that need to be taught are being taught. So there's that coaching and instructional component too. But I would invite Jason to talk about the work that you're doing at the committee level in terms of the fifth grade experience.
We put a team of folks together today, fifth grade, or not today, over the summer. They range from five through eight, and we brought in some counselors as well. And we brought in our literacy consultant, we brought in our math consultant to try to look at the data. So we've done an analysis that stems from looking at school sizes in our dirt. We're the fourth largest school out of twenty nine schools in our dirt. There are only five schools that are five, six, seven, and eight. Most schools are six, seven, and eight, and fifth is at the elementary level. We've looked at instructional time probably across fifty schools in Connecticut. And we've compared our instructional time to elementary instructional time and it's and we said that we, we, you know, kids go from eighty, eighty-five minute block to a forty minute block, a forty-five minute block. And you know, there's some value in more instructional time. So a host of things we've already met once for a full day, we are ready to have Jeff approve a survey that we want to send out to our current fifth grade parents to get their perceptions about how the transition was. We do a variety of events in the springtime and over the summer to help transition kids. And I think our kids transition well in terms of the rigor of the schedule and the seven block day. But I think there's, as Emily said, a lot of work to be done instructionally and just look at our curriculum and the resources. It's a, it's a fast paced day when you're coming from an eighty or an eighty-five minute block to coming into your math class. And it's really, really short. But again, we did that twenty years ago when the middle school opened and we just, the community at that time decided that it was important to get that life arts rotation. One could argue at the expense of some instructional time. And so that's what we're backing up and just taking a look at that a little bit. This isn't a surprise to us. We anticipated this happening. We've been at a deficit with our coaching model in the area of math. We've been there with language arts, but not with math. So weren't overly surprised to see that, but we just need to gather the right data so we can make the right decisions.
And there's a little bit of a dip across the state too, when it comes to, you know, that fifth to sixth grade, fourth to fifth grade, that, that block of time, for whatever reason.
If you, if you, if you look at, sorry, if you, if you look at physiologically, what kids go through, academically, what they go through, they go through the biggest, the second largest change for children is their middle school years, second only to birth to three. So they go through a lot of different things, not to say that we can't improve, but again, instructional time, the transition, how we integrate across the four content areas, those are all things we're working on.
So I know that we do a lot of cross curricular with E L A and social studies and science and everything else. Is there going to be talk about doing cross curricular with math? And science and math and life arts and math and social studies?
Yes, so it's, it's, it's important to think, you know, we just had a workshop today. We talked about vocabulary, how we integrate that vocabulary across content areas that you can come up with vocabulary words in social studies. We try to use them everywhere. So the same thing with math. We need to integrate our metric units and our measurement units into science, cuz that's really the application piece of those topics. So we're trying to move forward and not really leave any area of math unexplored. It's been difficult in terms of a primary resource for us too. So we, we kind of pull from here and we pull from there. It's been difficult in terms of a primary resource for us too. So we we kind of pull from here and we pull from there and work off Common Core State Standard topics, but we need to do a better job with that.
I'm just thinking like math and woodworking, math and cooking, math and sewing. There's all sorts of different ways to put math in those other topic areas.
And Jason, Emily, sorry, Craig, where you just said we've got that that core curriculum that goes up to every day now goes up to grade four and stops. And then we're kind of piecemealing at the grade five level and there's not.
Yeah, we don't have an identified primary resource in grade five, which is kind of what I was speaking to in terms of the curricular component. And I I am very, just looking at the pattern of data across the state, this is an outlier, right? And so you, it's not necessarily kids, it's what's what's happening in the system. And so the curriculum component, some of the instructional minutes and those other pieces are a part of the problem.
And when when you look at our our performance scores are good, it's our growth scores that are not good. So we we get kids to a certain level, we just can't, we're struggling moving those. If you take, if you purge five out of it, and you just look at six through eight, we're really competitive with that. But it's that it's that model. And so we've we've experienced throughout the years, different models. We've worked on two person teams just because of population numbers that have come through. So we've tried a variety of things in the in the past. But really, kids are are going when, you know, I'm speaking as the former elementary teacher where if I was doing the math lesson fractions, kids were getting, I had the ability and the luxury in class to say, you know what, we're going to push another 20 minutes right now because we have that flexibility in the schedule. Middle school, you live by the clock and there are seven periods a day when, you know, that time is ready to go to the next class, then you've got to go to the next class. So we're just trying to think about all options so we can make it better.
Yeah, thanks for that. It sounds very comprehensive. Put it really deep dive.
I mean, that's what it will entail. Yeah.
I have a question. My hand is up.
So the 16 and the 14% people, the kids that indicated basically they didn't feel well at school, you know, they didn't feel.
Oh, the survey data?
Yep. Do you try drill down on that to find out who those kids are? Is it anonymous?
It is anonymous. It's not identifiable.
Can they self identify somehow?
Oh, sure. Yes, of course. Through the survey?
Just.
Or just if they need.
I mean, I mean, it's almost like if you know that the problem exists for being neglectful by not going that extra step and figuring out who these kids are so that we can make sure that they're getting what they need so that they do feel connected.
Yeah, I mean, I would neglectful, I would say that's not necessarily a part of our work. I I think we can speak to the the systems that we have in place for students to access support and help when we need it. The resources and support we've put into place as a result of some of this data that we sent. We've we've seen the additional support staff that we've put into place, the social funds that we rolled into our operational funds. We see the need and we've responded in terms of ensuring that our staffing model is appropriate to meet the need. But also in terms of identifying those students who might be within that 42%. I'll just give an example. You know, we did the signs of we're the signs of suicide program. I think we started it. It's next week. Next month. So one of the program app, we we sort of teach a program in terms of how you're feeling about yourself, self interest behaviors or thoughts. And then a part of that is a survey that we do for all students that they can self identify whether or not they feel so they need to talk to somebody about themselves or a friend. So there are times, spaces and times that we do sort of do more identifiable ways in in that work. But yeah, when you do an anonymous survey with in a partnership with C-RAC and you you see 42%, the number is is scary. But I am comforted in the fact that we've responded before that with our support staff, our additional support staff members.
Okay. And then my next question is, do you see a variance of our fifth base students if they come from one school in particular? Since we have three elementary schools that are feeder schools into our middle school, is there are there some?
In terms of trends of.
Performance, even if our fifth graders are vulnerable and not performing at what we think they should be. Do we think that there's one school that's lagging that needs better?
I'm not, no, nothing that has really jumped out.
Jason, you can see.
If we see a common level of achievement across the school. So it's not, it's not an elementary. You know, one school, we don't find that any one of the three schools performs any better or any worse than any of the other elementary schools.
Okay. And then my third question is about the math coaches. Originally, we talked about them helping the teachers become better teachers, basically. So not just modeling intervention or the instructional opportunity for the students, but helping the teachers, all of the faculty to understand and all the parents and everybody who's available to understand better teaching practices to implement and then helping the parents then in turn know how to do that. Is that part of the plan?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, that is 100% the plan.
Okay. Eric, and thank you for your answers.
Just one, one second. So Candace has her hand raised. So she'll go next. Candace, just so you know, you can hear us, we can't hear you. So if you can actually type your question or comment in the chat and then we can read it out to you because of the network issues, we you can hear us, we can't hear you. So just want you to know that. So while Esteban goes, you might be able to get something into the chat. Go ahead, Esteban.
So question on the SATs, a lot of universities are going test optional. Have you seen a, so what we found at the higher end level is that a lot of the higher achieving kids are using the SATs, but the ones that are on the fence, they don't do that. So that we're this score seems higher than they are.
This assessment is a school day SAT. All of our students are required to take this assessment. So this is inclusive of all of our students.
Oh, good. Good. That was, thank you. That was one question. And then second one is more of a comment for us. So like, you know, we've seen the need for like the math coaches and the psychologists and the coworkers. And I think that's important to us for us to have in the back of our mind as we engage the board of finance and the community when it started budget process that show that, hey, the math coaches and those other people are helping and we can show the data that it's useful. And why we need to keep investing in that is not just because we think it, but there's actual data.
And I would add to that, that we've added the ELL staff member as well as a result of the increase in our ELL student population. Thank you.
I don't see anything yet. Other questions? And maybe can someone chat with? I just one quick comment. While we're reading, so slides nine, eight and nine.
Yes.
It would be really helpful on slide eight to be able to see our Dirk. That's the one, I think that's the slide eight, the one that has the yeah, the red and blue ELA math three or five by grade. It would be really nice also a bar that shows the Dirk.
Like the Dirk average?
Yeah, if we have it, if it don't spend a lot of time getting it. And then same kind of comment on slide nine. Except if if it is, if we can get it broken down, it'd be nice to see the state average and our Dirk averages for those as well.
Which Dirk are we now?
D.
D? As in dandelion?
Okay, great. I don't know if others are interested, but I'd be interested. Any word from Ken?
No.
Any other questions, Bradley? This is really great. Thank you. Okay, so now the next goal. So maybe I'll start and go to you all remember it, but I'll kind of reflect back on, you know, we did, we put together 10 concepts of goals of areas of interest. We did a survey, the results of our survey were pretty dispersed, diverse thoughts on what's important. We had taken some action to say, hey, maybe we put some more words around each of the goals and then go through the process again of prioritizing. But Jeff and I after the meeting and had a night to reflect on it, Jeff and I all spoke and said, well, why don't Jeff and I take a shot at drafting goals for people to opine on. So this is kind of a chance to kind of give your thoughts and apply on what we came up draft goals. But that's something to put some meat on the bone and give you a chance to to look at it. So that we did, I think. And then Esteban did mention, hey, what about, you know, you guys didn't put anything in for global language. So he had provided a goal, so we put that in. So that's the sixth one as well. And then the only other comment I'll make for kind of opening this discussion is, I think we all agreed, I mean, it can change, but we had all agreed. Having some focus is important. So we we talked in the range of four to four or five goals. About that having too many. I'm sure that we accomplish what we prioritize. So those are just kind of how we got to here and wanted to open up or, you know, thoughts and comments.
Just a quick quick comment about policy. That's the first thing on the page. And I think the heavy left is probably, I don't say behind us, right? But, you know, just in terms of where we want to focus, we I think we can safely prioritize other areas since that work is is kind of in the final stretches.
I'm backing her up. I have my next thought. I have it not as a, I have it not as a goal.
Okay.
So now do we are we talking about thinking about maybe voting on what each of us thinks would be our top two or?
No, thanks. Okay. So what I I thought is first is just general comments is looking at these, how do they sit? How do they feel in terms of is there anyone that wouldn't do, is any of the wording, as you look at the wording of what how we're defining these goals, do they make sense? And then ultimately, I don't, I don't know. Let's see where we get to in terms of, you know, if we are going to do some type of voting or prioritization. I'm hoping that we kind of align on something without having to do that.
Well, I guess my concern is that if we don't do that, then it's too much, it's like scattershot. And we really do need to focus. So that would be, that wasn't what I was going to say until you just said that. So. But my concern about what I see in front of me, I think you did a beautiful job. I love it. You guys did a really nice job with this. But what I would be most concerned about would be that the high level instructional practices assessment growth development for students, for all students, for all of our students, I think that needs to be. We cannot, we have to include anybody who has any kind of learning difference, any different socioeconomic. I mean, it has to be that inclusive piece needs to be included in the high level instructional practices. And somehow that language needs to be incorporated. And maybe the language doesn't need to be incorporated. Maybe I should just assume that. But I don't want to assume. So I want to bring up the point that I really feel like that's important.
Yeah, I think that's.
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, that's great. Lee and then Jamie.
So similar, it was really helpful to see the descriptions for for these. I felt a lot more confident reading through them after kind of doing my voting the first time around. The only like wordsmithing kind of feedback that I have, maybe this is top of mind, leaving AAA is around the culture and climate repression. The framing of to reestablish. I totally understand the intent of reestablish a safe, nurturing, inclusive environment. And one of the things that we were talking about in AAA is like really wanting to recognize all the wonderful aspects of culture and climate that are happening in our school building. And so I don't have a suggestion or replacement, I'm going to noodle on it. But I think to like deepen our work in this area, but I I'd like to work with it somehow so that not saying we are approaching it from like a deficit lens, but I I want to make that clear in the language.
So are you thinking like a continued to foster? Because oh, there's some words we talked about in AAA, or are you saying more of a deeper continue to foster means continue what we're doing and grow a little bit?
I think advances the word that popped into my head. Maybe I'm reading it kind of. But to reestablish makes me feel like, oh, this is.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And it's not, I think we can advance it. There's a lot we can do, but it's not, non existent.
All right, let's highlight the reestablish word because I agree that and see if we can come up with a little better language than that. I guess Jamie and then Bill.
So I have an issue with the beginning of the budget. What? Because it is our job to bring forward the responsible operating budget. So I have a problem with it being a goal because it should be what we do normally. It shouldn't be a goal. It should be our normal operating procedure. So I just, I I don't know how to wordsmith it, but working to bring forth the responsible operating budget is our job.
You know, I just have a reaction. Right? We want it. There is the operational piece of sort of the baseline, right? And it's the goals are kind of overlooked.
The last sentence there was the one that I was like, yeah. The heart of what we had discussed.
But it's our job to. I mean, I don't know if you want to wordsmith it, but it is our job to bring.
Because what I read, so I appreciate that because when I, when we were talking about it, my area of focus was that we're going to work with administration. The partnership piece, which we should anyway, but but that, but the partnership, not the, and we're going to work together and then do something. But you're right, that's part of what we do. So what don't we? So the revenue opportunities. We don't do. What you talked about. And I like to think that we do.
Support our academic, social and online.
That's something we can do more of or do something. All right. So maybe we can get rid of that first part. And then kind of make it flow that second and third part. And and then keep that the last sentence, it sounds like that works. That this effort includes increasing efforts on marketing and branding or district.
General like exploring new initiatives for generating.
So I just crossed off to bring forth the responsible operating budget.
I think that that will get rid of it and we may have to fine tune the Yeah, I I on the culture and climate piece, I think we do need to do some editing there. And I, what jumped out as me was responsive to student and family needs. When I think of culture and climate, it is all inclusive. There are many stakeholders are not like mentioned in that in that piece. And it is implying that culture and climate is just about student and family when, or I'm just seeing that. And it really is about teachers, staff, everybody. So. General thoughts? So why don't we, I I we can take this a whole bunch of ways. Why don't, I guess my suggestion, why don't Jeff and I take this feedback rework and then send it out? And maybe if you can reprovide wordsmithing, any anything. If you can reprovide wordsmithing, any, anything you suggest. And then we can provide another copy of this out. When's our next meeting? The third or fourth or whatever?
Can we just submit? We've done that on other occasions.
You could survey.
Yeah, we can get. Yeah, we can get the feed like wordsmithing document, maybe. Let's say by next Monday. Well, no, let me see when Jeff and I get an update out. So we'll get some update out to everyone and then give like a week. For you to kind of read through them again, see what words you want to change or something else that makes sense. And then maybe Jeff and I can then incorporate that. And then we send out a draft. Final goals that somehow we vote on or something or get. Final feedback. So for the seven, we're kind of coming in and voting and approving. Hopefully we've iterated. You just got to be careful about iterating, right? We can't do that. Again, iterate, we can, you can send it to Jackie. For Jeff and I to review or to Jeff for us to review. And then we'll get something back out and then you can provide back feedback to us. So we can figure that out. So then. So we'll work through that. The only other question so. Will be. It seems like anybody have an issue with policy not being one of our goals. Any concerns? So then.
Well, and I think after the presentation tonight that we just got on pathways, I think.
That, yeah, that's.
I think we're really in a good spot as far as that's concerned. And I just feel, I mean, I just want updates because I'm so excited and what's going to happen and how it's going to roll out. But I don't think we need to. Micro manager have too many further discussions on that. We hit the ground and slide.
So you're proposing we don't have a goal on pathways?
I mean, yeah.
Well, I, I don't know. I, go ahead. Yeah, I just, the, my concern is if, if we, what we have to do is if, if we don't have certain things identified as goals, as then when we get to the budgeting process. Would, do we, you know, when they're, we're deciding on something and we look back to what our goals are, then we're not supporting something. You know, we can't assume that our level of support is going to stay if we don't, I, I don't know.
It's a good tie in.
I hear what you're saying.
Yeah, that's an important.
Yeah, and my, my feeling was pathways, a lot of great progress, but it's a little more in its infancy than established. And that's, and I want to, I want to get it to be established and then we don't need it as a goal because we now just have a plan. And a lot of great work has been done to get to where we are. But. You know, I think we need.
And for Bill's point too, that's why we, Eric and I talked, actually, Eric's, Eric's recommendation that we had moved, I can have had a separate one on SEL and DEI, we incorporate into culture and climate. So we're using that verbiage about DEI, continue DI work, continue SEL work. So we embedded that in because I think you're, you're spot on. These, these have to support wherever we go with our budget or should support.
Can I just? Say that I, I would like to just piggyback on Lee's comment on the culture climate one and maybe put in some language about the work that's being done with the AAA committee. And their goal of getting their new bylaw and their new name and their new charter setup. Just, you know, mention it somehow or that they're working together on it or.
It's a little. We're talking about, we're taking out policy completion. And at the AAA meeting, we basically talked about all the policy that we need to look at. That's going to be part of culture and climate. So.
Maybe policy stays, but as AAA's job.
And when I looked at policy and on this list, that's not the context I was thinking about. So.
So, you know, well, that's what I'm saying. I mean, you know, I, I. Really. Well, I can do the now or in the report for AAA, but. Much of our work moving forward is really on what policy do we have that is already. Connected to culture and climate and what is missing. So, so there are, so there's.
And I think the way that we have it, right, it's in our policy completion piece. It doesn't get to that. To me, it reads as sort of the, it's the audit that's happening. I think you're getting at is sort of the. Evolving.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, I'm always evolving, right? But yeah, I just, I, I'm comfortable with taking it out of there, but it, some of it is going to land in the other goal.
Policy is a, we review policy all the time. It's just that this. Audit was something we needed to do because everything in there was from nineteen ninety nine.
Right. You're, you were looking at all policy. This is, we're looking at a small piece of policy.
Which is why I said I'm fine getting rid of the policy because we're done with our audit, except for maybe twenty.
Yeah, we're, we're, that will be done. Exactly. I think that's a good point. And you could add some sort of language into the culture and climate progression, something along the lines of, you know, through guidance of the subcommittee, the subcommittee AAA board or. Something along those lines, just to kind of tie that in.
Visual.
So then. If you remember, we had ten kind of concepts. We. Took some of them and combined them into these. Maybe it's worth any comments, may, you know, Esteban, I'm happy, but do you want to ask one just talk for a second about the world language at elementary level, what you're think, you were thinking and then. See where, where are people on that? Because that's the one that was.
And so, yeah. Yeah. So I tried to make it very self-explanatory. I don't, I didn't want us to commit to like. Reintroducing world languages because we don't know if it's feasible or not, but from a budgetary view, from the curricular point of view, how is that going to affect all those components? But at least we want to, I wanted us to engage in that conversation. With the administration, like what is that going to look like? How many instructors will we have to hire? Well, how would that affect the school day and see what our peers are doing, you know, and neighboring districts and then our DRG. Are we, you know, how are we advancing that? So I just wanted to at least do the work of researching that and also asking parent in. Community feedback as well. I see how they feel like that's something that they would want. Because I think there were some surveys done back a few years ago.
Years back.
So we need to know, like, is that something that, like, the community wants, but not necessarily commit us to, like, we are going to do this because. Most likely, we might not be able to do it full scale.
Or just to explore other ways of doing it because, you know, we keep talking about thinking outside of the box. So. What are other systems doing to provide other language instruction? And how could we do that?
My, my, my only fear, I just want to, because we went through this with basketball at the middle school where we wavered back and forth, we cut it and then we put it back in and then budget comes on, cut it again, and then we. We try and put it back in. I don't want to get into that situation with something of this nature either, because that's kind of what happened six, five, six, seven years ago, whatever it was. We put it back in, but then the teacher left and we cut it because of the budget. And now we have an ad. So I just want to be cautious that if we're, if we're, if I'm getting a survey as a parent. I'm thinking, oh, they're going to bring it back. And now I might get my hopes back up. I just want to be careful if that's something that, you know, you want to do, we really need to have some, I think, some deep conversations about, you know. Prioritizing, you know, with, with the budget coming up. And maybe that's a discussion that's going to be had over the, you know, the coming weeks and months, but. I want to be careful with what's getting pushed out. Budget is going to be very tough as we all have already talked about.
Jill has a question in chat. How detailed do we want the goals to be? Should the goals be measurable? And I agree with Jamie regarding policy.
So I think. Anyway, it's not coming up as much.
She, she's sending it to the. It's going to Grant's computer. Yeah. Board of Education.
Good question. And I think once we pick what we're going to go after. I think that we do need to get very granular. What are, what are we measuring? How are we going to know if we're successful? What data are we going to be looking at to measure that? And what are the action steps, levers, stakeholders, all parts of all these things, like to actually map that out? I don't know if it makes sense to do that now when we're still going to be, some of these are not going to, you know, ultimately be on our, on our list, but I, I think it's a good push. And I'm excited to. Make these pretty measurable and actionable once we figure out what we're going to go after.
Yeah, I'm, I'm completely hundred percent aligned with that. And I'll give my butt. And my only thought is. I'm just worried because I, I, you know, I do semester goals. I have to do it twice a year. It takes a long time to do that.
Yes.
My only concern is that we're going to be in December coming up with our goals for this year and the year is halfway done. And how do we manage that? That's, I'd like to do that. But I think we need to start this process earlier. So I, a lesson learned is probably need to start this. Maybe it's a summer thing to do because. It's a little quieter and there's less things, well, quieter here, not quiet at home, but. It might give us time to a little brainstorm and and kind of iterate it a little bit. So we can take a shot at making some of it smarter. But I, I just don't want to spend, my only concern is that we end up spending two months trying to get what is the measure? What's the metric? What's the outcome metric? And I do think. I like the idea. I'm just trying to, I'm going from logistics that I'm concerned. We can take a shot at it though. But if we end up iterating and debating on that, then we really.
Yeah, I think it might have to be the sort of thing where we have one or two.
Yeah.
Folks put their heads together, drop something. And it might not be fully robust, but I do think your, your point around starting this earlier actually makes sense because. You know, we're putting a lot of time and thought into creating the goals. I want to make sure that we're setting ourselves up to implement and measure them well, too.
Yeah. So I think we should make this like a June, July activity for next.
At least get a.
Yeah. And then we have more time that we're kind of setting it. Halfway through the year.
So this suggestion is to. Have the people who had wordsmithing. Reach out to you and Jeff and get that wordsmithing in. Put out a survey monkey to us so you can get your idea of what are top three. So just do a top five, one, two, three, four, five. What are the top five? And go with the top three for our goals for the year. So that we don't have this going until December before we actually make our decision on our goals. And then my second suggestion was do quarterly check-ins on our goals to see the status. And that way we can do some kind of measuring on whether or not we are achieving any. Quarterly. Because if we keep, if we wait till next meeting. And then we have a vote in the next meeting, we're going to be in December setting our goals.
And that's some of the feedback we can bring. I just four core areas that you saw in the presentation. That's our core focus. That's everything that we're, we're doing. So. So these will kind of wrap around that. So we can bring you data and bring you measurable or attainable information that supports your, your goals.
So I, I have just five options. How many are we looking to adopt with vote on?
We usually adopt like three.
I think we can do whatever, I mean, I guess years ago. Like two pages or so of gold. And then. Four years ago. We've kind of evolved from, but we're, I think we've seen less is more. There's no defined number. So I, for me, I wouldn't. If there's one that we're passionate about, I wouldn't say, well, we're only going to do two, we're only going to do three. If there's one that we really want to do, we should, but, but we can. Kind of prioritize with it.
And I think knowing too that we're like halfway through this academic year. So like, we do all five, we might not be able to do all five. So let's also scale down because of that.
These goals, I guess, are these, I actually have a question. It is technically July first. Start of year, right?
Yeah, it's the new, the new.
Right. So. I know it feels like it's the new, but we're actually like three or four months into this as, as we start looking to complete. So I, I think we just have to judge. And I think the key learn, and Liam, glad you brought that, is like, we got to start this earlier. And if we started in kind of the June, July after graduation. I think we just, we have another meeting after graduation. That might be a good time to start saying, what are we going to do next year? We finalize it by September. Now we feel like we have a, a full year to complete them and make them smarter and all that.
There's no proportion of like ignorance, um. Which is a lot of. Goals to me, as I read them, are so broad and vague. Isn't there a process that goes along with these with specific steps? Measurable outcomes. I mean, it's nice to say I want to lose fifty pounds by next year, or maybe just one, maybe just twenty. But if I say that as a goal, but then there's no structure to that goal and no outcome with you. Am I missing something? Is this like the first step and there's more to come?
So I think that was a little of a bit of these points. So I think I'd actually say what these goals say is I want to lose my weight. Or I want to get healthy, right? And it doesn't, what does that mean? Accomplished it. And what, at least if you said, you know, I want to lose fifty pounds, that's at least measurable. Did I lose fifty or did I not lose fifty or twenty or whatever number? And I think that's where we probably need to get to with our goals is to be able to. I just. Again, I got my operational logistical mind going, like, how quickly can we get that done? Given it's October fifteenth now and we're going to try to, or so that's my only concern, but you're right. But maybe if we can define, maybe it is two steps and we can define, these are Jeff generally the goals. And then maybe we can take some time. Even if does, like, we have our goals and then we can define a few metrics for each of the goals, even if that takes a little more time, we still have our overarching goals.
Because it would be helpful to me, for example, goal one, Emily's brought so many topics up tonight, and then to tie. It's all planning with the specifics from her presentation would make more sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's where we bring you the.
Yeah, that we're.
Yeah. I think the exact same thing with high level instructional practices. What was just shared, you know, this evening, we will bring back to you, I mean, it would happen, have to happen after we get scores back after July, but along the way, there's other. You know, summative assessments and data we could bring to share on the CL days as well.
This is a whole process.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's where, yeah, along the way, some progressive points. I always looked at your goals as kind of a little work. Over, over our sort of things. And they were a bit more broad, but. We'll start for a set and then we'll talk further about some measurable components that we could tie in or put in place.
I just have a question. How does this relate to our district improvement plan?
Comparable. Those four, as I mentioned, those, the, the four pillars.
Yep.
That's all of the improvements around.
Bing, bing, bing.
Bing, bing, to the, exactly. That's it. That's exactly what.
And then are we going to have updates on that in relationship to this?
Yep, exactly. There's where that, that tied, I don't want to steer too far. I don't want you to steer too far off of.
Of course.
Those for, for your goals, sort of thing.
But I think we always need to keep.
But yeah, there's got to be some other things that you're thinking about. Policy. We work on.
Yeah, so what Jeff and I try to work with this, get it back out to you in the next couple of days. And then get feedback from you. Based on that feedback, we can do either some type of quick survey and prioritize. Pick, do something, well, we'll figure out based on the feedback that we get what, what's next. Uh, and then so hopefully for the November seventh meeting, so that's like four weeks. That will. That meeting hopefully will be more to finalize. And then, and it might be a little bit to discuss what are some metrics? Or are there certain metrics that we want to think about to have a broader discussion about that? Thanks, everyone, for the feedback. Really helpful. So that concludes our discussion of action items for the night. And so we're moving on to administration reports. And go to Jeff.
Yeah, a few items. Next week, we've got our first D E I District Committee meeting. So we're filling that agenda hopefully as soon as we will continue and be part of that. So we're looking forward to that. Cave, new member packet. I have a packet here. If any of our newer members, we have four of these. We ordered from Cave. This came up in a previous meeting. So if anybody wants one, that's a new member, let me know. We're happy to distribute them. Look, you know, use ahead to order a few and have them on hand. So it's, it's, I haven't looked, I haven't, no way to this, but if anybody wants. You can have it and we've got three more back at Central Office. Just let me know. Yeah, yeah, here. Got extra copy of the delegate assembly. Jamie, I think sent out a reminder, was that?
No, it was about the convention. The delegate assemblies on my agenda thing.
Okay, so this is Thursday, November seventeenth. I've got an extra booklet here if anybody wants it. Sorry, if you want to take a look at it, feel free. These should have gone to each of you, I think. Yes, yeah, I just want to make sure everybody, everybody got it. Okay, good. So the next one, if you didn't get one, for whatever reason. The events calendar, we have to get a permissions component to allow you. I want to circle back on that because so you all can do the events calendar. We get tied up obviously with the technology issue. So once that's almost rectified, we'll get the events calendar permissions squared away. So you can have access to that. So that's forthcoming. Board of Ed visits. I was looking at some tentative dates to visit some of the schools. I want to talk and work with administrators on some of these target days. But it's kind of maybe November third and November tenth as tentative date. So I'll get back to you and want to talk to the administrators and we'll see. The third of November and the tenth of November. Maybe trying to hit two different levels per second. Um, and maybe if somebody can't one third, maybe they make the tenth or vice versa. So we'll get some more information out to that, just kind of maybe hold those dates. Board of Selectmen, we'll be going to the Board of Selectmen for the middle school water heater as well as the truck on eleven two, November second. It goes from there, goes to the Board of Finance on eleven nine. And then a town meeting will be on twelve seven, just to give you some dates. So Dr. One, myself, Mariana, you know, at least whoever else would like to join that event. We'll be heading the Board of Selectmen on eleven two to provide that information. And then Chris is here. Baseball field, Chris is done. It's done. So now we're just going to wait for some grass to grow and hope for the next set of sunny days. We're going to get over the rest of this weekend, weekend. We'll perpetuate. So. Yeah, we need. Next week, bear, okay. Really? All right, well, we're supposed to have a stretch, I think, to like Sunday of sun now, starting tomorrow. So that will help. But it's, uh, it's completed where you see like patches of sod out there. Those are where the water spigots are, it's a water, so. Yes, that's where each one of those is. It's kind of funny. It's like their little pods of grass that you all. So. Podgrass, yes. There's blowout hole to slow.
Right.
Yeah, so those are, those are set. And then the senior lot is done and paved. Yeah, that's, that's all set. So get kids back in there and get them painting their spots again.
Are they going to paint over the new?
It's tradition.
That's fun. That's one of those culture things we got to keep.
They're already talking about it. So that's, um, that was it. Your middle school too, just for another facilities piece they're doing, all power washing around. You know, the middle school building, Jason showed, showed a picture. Looks pretty good. So. Yeah, so we're getting all those white spots off, everything else. So a lot of projects have gone on, so a lot more to talk about. Chris is going to join us at some additional meetings moving forward to provide some more facility updates. Thanks.
Thanks, Jeff. And Elise.
Well, it's quite the update today. I will just take the opportunity to thank the entire learning community. Staff, teachers, students, custodians in our entire tech team and everyone else. Administrators around their patience through this very, very challenging time. One that's, that has really tested patients. It's a slow and arduous process in getting our computers back online. And we've just been really truly committed to that. And folks have been really flexible. And there's been some silver linings associated with it that, you know, I think are important too. But I just want to take the opportunity to just say that. And I know more about reimagining devices than I ever, ever, ever.
Yes.
Actually, I, I do kind of, I am intrigued, I will say. Yeah, which is quite interesting.
It is a whole other world out there between networking and everything else. Yes. Yes.
And thank you to the business department to making sure that everybody got paid despite the major challenge.
We missed it because we were here all last weekend, but Indigenous Peoples' Day, we wanted to go to that on Sunday. Maybe during the board of it report. Yeah, yeah, because we missed that.
So we, you know, my, my staff and I really, it was a fun process that we got everyone paid and with minimal issues. So glad about that because that's important to, you know.
We have a lot of unhappy staff. That's a big.
So, you know, and then obviously in continuing the, so, you know, budget projections. Really want to get a good number for you, a good number. But, you know, a, a number that we can work with on the fourteenth.
Yeah, we're going to bring up, bring a pretty hard number on the fourteen.
Yeah. Worked with, yeah, worked with the Public Works Director at the town. So he and I are on the same page, we're using the same numbers. And he and I, you know, keep, you know, we'll keep, we keep in contact, we have a good working relationship. So, you know, do that. So we're using the same, because I think that's important.
Thanks, Mariana. Any questions? Okay. So that can close our administration reports and we move on to committee reports. We had a triple A meeting this afternoon.
Yeah. I, I thought it was a great meeting. I want to thank everybody on the committee for doing homework and doing a bunch of reading before the meeting. Which is, I think, why we were successful at finally kind of getting our feet on the ground around. And getting our, our heads around this initiative that we got with culture and climate. So really, we, we started drafting our definitions of culture and climate. We talked about, you know, eventually modifying our bylaws and, and. I think we're all in agreement that, that the items that fell under triple A really fall under the big umbrella of culture and climate. So they may not need to be spelled out as such. Um, and we set some goals for our next meeting where we're going to take a, a look at. The state's culture policy guidelines along with the national school climate framework. Compare that with what policies we currently have in place and try to figure out. What else we want to possibly add. So start, we're starting to look at how we, what we have for policy with regard to those things and what we might want to add. I don't know if anyone else who was there want to add anything. Oh, I, I guess I'd add one more thing in that, assuming that that stays as one of our board goals. I think our group can easily put some targets. So we could own that one for what, you know.
Oh, yeah. I heard that. It's on tape.
Yeah.
That fits nicely under.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be great. So. Any questions for Bill? Okay, so I don't think we have any other committee reports, but we add.
I'm just going to say for policy, we were supposed to have a meeting on the twelfth. But due to the internet issues, Jeff and I decided to reschedule that one. And it's eleven two at four thirty.
Thanks, Jamie. And then we added to committee reports, item E, which are updates from Cave and Learn. So Jamie being our.
I don't have anything from Learn.
Okay, so we all got our delegate assembly packet, which is Jeff already mentioned, which I was going to say. But there is also a cave webinar, which hasn't started signups yet, but look for them soon. The Board's Role in Advocacy. It's on December sixth from twelve to one fifteen, but they have not started signups yet.
Good. Any questions? Cave, learn.
And sign up for the delegate assembly. It's all on, it's a learning experience.
Jamie gets. Okay, so that closes our committee reports. And next is board comments and future agenda items. I'm just going to go real quickly first and then go to others. My, just real quickly, I did want to make sure we thank. Jeff and Elise, Mariana, custom computing or administrative. I mean, everybody what they've had to do without. Internet network issues and reimagining and everything. So thank you. It said already, but, you know, I definitely want to thank on behalf of the board, everything that went into it. I know there's weekend work and night work and far beyond what. What we, we, we thought of. So I really appreciate everybody doing that and working through it. So thank you. Other board comments?
And I just want to say that I, through COVID, it was not easy to keep the co-op with the slime with the robotics program. But now we are alive and well again. And this past weekend, we hosted our off-season event where we had about twenty schools and about four hundred people at the high school. And it would not have gone as smoothly without the support of all of our new East Line kids and parents who showed up to help. And I think they got a great first experience with that. So I'm excited to be joining teen, you know, schools again. I also, I, I, you know, to think about it, Dave, I got to get Dave to show up at one of our things. Because I think it would, it's a lot of opportunity for internships and stuff like that with the, with the mentors and companies that support our program. It might be interesting for you to see what students are involved with that and how that would maybe branch off some connecting with the career pathways piece. Because we, you know, we've got CAD stuff going on there and it's all, all very similar to what you've been talking about. So might, might make some connections there.
Great. Thanks, Phil.
Phil, was that in?
Yeah. Who was at the high school?
Well, I was able to interview Eve Slum. She's a senior here and she's one of the editors of the Viking Saga. She's on my show, Stories Were Telling, highest praises for what she has experienced in her academic program here. And her work on the Viking Saga and kind of the struggle that they had getting their paper out under the duress of not having the internet available to them. And also talked about her involvement with the intergenerational poetry project that we did last year. And continuing to look for, we already identified two junior and senior who are going to do it this year. And then I've identified two seniors that are adults, eighty, seventy, late seventy, eighty-year-old people. Who have had interesting lives are going to continue this project with them. So really nice things going on with the community connection. But also I would still actually have some more information, like a future agenda item for special education. I brought that up last time, so if you have that in your future, I'd appreciate that.
Indigenous Peoples' Day event was, was great. We had nice weather, a lot, very good attendance. I saw a lot of our teachers from different grades and a lot of kids. So that was a good thing. So thank you all for disseminating the information for attending, otherwise it could. I also went to the football game on Friday. My kids wanted to watch actually the, the marching band. That was the reason we went. But so, but it's a good thing to highlight, you know, like all the different things that we have, like football team, the band. So, so as we talk about marketing the, this is the school system and whatnot. That's one of the things that we want to highlight, all different activities, so.
Great. Thanks, Ashman. Alicia.
Thanks. Mine's more kind of like a comment slash request. It's not nearly as exciting as the final round of comments here. But just in terms of kind of getting organized. And I think I have fallen a little bit, you know, victim to kind of almost potentially missing a meeting here or there that has gotten moved, which is good. Because then I didn't have to miss it. But if, just in terms of communicating meetings, I, the updates, the email updates are great. And I use those a lot. And I know we have the schedule that's out, that's posted. With the district email or whatever server on Outlook, is there maybe an opportunity without creating extra work to do like an Outlook invite? For the meetings that we have. And, and that's, I don't know if that's exactly, like if there's any suggestions to, just to kind of push, push it.
Yeah, I wonder if she could get that out of network. I don't know. We'll talk to the tech then tomorrow to see if we can internally do.
I think that's a.
Yeah.
Pretty easy thing to do.
That would be great. I know I, I take the calendar and then I.
I do the same thing.
Go into my calendar. But and then if anything changes, which sometimes especially our, the meetings don't change, but the committees can change. And then sometimes I forget to remove the old ones. I'm like, oh, there's triple A or there's FFO and then I find, oh, no, no, that moved, but I still have to.
Yeah. So for me, it's like the, I, I'm more focused on sort of when those committees break. I know we have to schedule it, but if they, if they move or something.
Yeah. And then we all know when these moves. Yeah, then we all know that it moved.
Yeah.
I don't know if there's an opportunity to, I know you're working on the like events calendar. It's kind of like a board event calendar with meetings and.
It's a combined, because our secretaries have access to it. It already exists. We're just going to give you access to it. Yeah.
Take it back.
But let me talk to Jackie tomorrow and see if there's any. You're all part of the, you have your L P S, you know, addresses. You should be able to send you an invite, so.
I mean, it sounds easy, but sometimes like I'll be at work and I'm like, where's the distribution list? It just doesn't exist.
Yeah.
Can you know the name?
Yeah.
You know.
Tomorrow, Lisa.
Thank you.
A function as a board of that number is the fees associated with that or can we?
We have the. Let me, let me look at that. If you're coming as a, as a board of ed member. You know, you, you give your service to the board of ed for free sort of thing. So as you say, come on in for, you know, free. We need some way to identify. Yeah, we need some sort of identification tool. So let's get the events out there first and then yeah, something that you catch your eye, so we know. So no, I guess that's a good, you should have to pay. Yeah.
But if you want to get the lay of the land, go to McDonald's and.
Everything's going on there.
You can see what all the kids have to say for all the activities. See what all the kids at the site for all the activities.
Hey, any other comments, agenda items?
I'm making motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's almost favor. Thanks Candace and Jill, sorry, the technology didn't let you speak, but appreciate you listening in.